Call a meeting to order if you would, join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today we'll be providing a proclamation on Prevention of Child Abuse Month, so my invocation addresses that this evening. Heavenly Father, in a world which surrounds us with such comfort, we often forget about the hushed cries of neglected and abused children. You are their hope. Please hear the stifled cries of those children who feel forgotten. Make them know that there is hope for healing. Be the small voice in the midst of their pain that gives them sanctuary even if they wonder why no one cares. Give them reason to hope and see beyond their confusion. Move us to aid, making us aware of their need for a protector. Guide the people in their lives to build a refuge for their hearts in need of healing. Give each of us the wisdom and childlike faith we need that will ultimately lead these little ones to a safe haven. Amen.
Okay, uh, the agenda as you have it has no additions to discuss unless you all have something to add.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries five zero. Consent agenda. Do I get a motion on that, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries five zero. That brings us up to public appearances. Uh, time for some proclamations. Okay. Oh, good. We've got a collection of people. Wide angle on that camera over there. All right, proclamation for National County Government Month. Ready and resilient counties prepare, respond, thrive. By virtue of the authority vested in the Orange County Board of Supervisors, we hereby proclaim the month of April as National County Government Month in Orange County, Virginia. Whereas the nation's 3,069 counties, serving more than 300 million Americans, provide a variety of essential public services to create health, safety, vibrant, and economically resilient communities. And whereas Orange County and other counties across the nation build infrastructure, maintain roads and bridges, provide health care, administer justice, keep communities safe, run elections, manage solid waste, keep records, and much more. And whereas Orange County and all counties take pride in their responsibility to protect and enhance the health, safety, and welfare of its residents in sensible and cost-effective ways. And whereas in order to remain healthy, vibrant, safe, and economically competitive, American's counties must be able to anticipate and adapt to all of the changes. And whereas throughout the national, through the National Association of Counties, President Linda Langston's Resilient Counties Initiative, NACO is encouraging counties to focus on how they prepare and respond to natural disasters and emergencies that counties may face, including public health and safety challenges. And whereas each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to actively promote their own programs and services to the public they serve. And whereas the Orange County Sheriff's Office, Fire and EMS, E-911 Center make up a team of public safety officials in Orange County, a group of dedicated individuals who strive to go above and beyond their call of duty, responding to emergencies and natural disasters, promoting public awareness and involvement, enhancing communication efforts, and effectively utilizing available grant monies. And whereas the faithful response and commitment in our public safety team makes our county a safe place to live, play, and conduct business, now therefore be proclaimed on this 25th day of March, 2014, that the Orange County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes April, 2014, as National County Government Month and encourages all county officials, employees, schools, and residents to participate in and learn more about the county's government activities. And to take the initiative to become involved in public safety programs throughout the community. And there's one there, and one here, thank sir, and one here, thank sir, and... So we even switch.
Your next proclamation is for National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and Alicia Vines and Ashley Jacobs are here.
Okay.
Nope, that's just saying.
This is a proclamation for National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Prevent child abuse and neglect, look, listen, and respond. By virtue of the authority vested in the Orange County Board of Supervisors, we hereby proclaim the month of April as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in Orange County, Virginia. Whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a community problem that depends on involvement among people throughout the community. And whereas child maltreatment occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and do not know how to cope. And whereas the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community. And whereas all citizens should become involved in supporting families and raising their children in a safe nurturing environment. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among families, social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, now therefore be proclaimed on this 25th day of March, 2014, that the Orange County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes April, 2014, as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in Orange County and calls its observance to the attention of all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families, thereby prevent child abuse and neglect, strengthening the communities in which we live. I'm already getting this, I could win migraines, I don't need help. Thank y'all, and I think y'all have something to...
We do.
Um, so we just wanted to give you all a little bit about the background into what we're going to be doing locally um, next month to raise awareness for our efforts. And also to bring your attention to some of our local statistics and that sort of thing.
This slide basically says what child abuse is. One of the things we want to bring your attention to is the second and third paragraph. In fiscal year 2013, there were approximately 51,000 children reported as possible victims of abuse and or neglect in Virginia. 6,200 were found to be maltreated, and of those, 29 children died as a result of the abuse and neglect that they received. Um, one interesting fact that we received from social services was in Orange County, 188 child protective services complaints were received in 2013, which was a major increase over the 158 reported the previous year.
Um, this is some information that was provided by Prevent Child Abuse Virginia, one of the agencies that we're partnering with to raise awareness. Um, unfortunately, it provides some staggering statistics. On average, every 13 days, a child dies from abuse or neglect in the state of Virginia. Um, every two hours, a child is served by a domestic violence program in the state of Virginia. Um, so here's just some information that is very unfortunate.
Um, one of the things that we're doing is we're participating with the Blue Ribbon Campaign. I have mine on and Ashley has hers, and we actually have blue ribbons for each of the Board of Supervisor members. We ask that you wear them just to help raise awareness. People have come up and said, "What is that for?" And so we get to explain. So that's one of the ways that we are participating. We have put together a bunch of these cards and order forms for another program that we're going to be doing that have ribbons attached that we can hand out to people if they would like one, so they can wear them as well. So we're really excited about that. Um, we had one of our community service girls come in to help put that together, so she was very happy and actually moved at what we were doing. So it made a, it had an effect on her.
Um, one of the other programs that we're participating in this year that we're really excited about is called Pin Wheels for Prevention. So your ribbons are actually attached to some information about the program. Basically, pinwheels are the shared symbol for child abuse prevention and reflects childhood hope, health, and happiness. Um, and all across the state of Virginia, in the month of April, pinwheel gardens will be planted. Specifically, the Lewis-Ginter Botanical Garden in Richmond, they plant 4,000 each year. Um, and so I've only seen pictures, but it looks pretty remarkable. Um, so we're going to be participating in that. We are accepting donations for pinwheels to plant gardens in highly visible areas of the county. Um, depending on how many we get is how many locations we can put them in. Um, one location that I know that we are putting them in that we're excited about is right at Route 15 and 20 on the big hills as you enter into Prospect and the Taylor Administration Complex. Um, on those hills right there, we're hoping to have a big garden there. Um, and hopefully several other places in the county. Um, and each dollar that we receive will be used to purchase a pinwheel, and any remaining proceeds are going to be used to benefit both of the food pantries in the county. Um, so we are definitely accepting donations for that. And if anyone in the audience is interested in that, there will be some order forms on the table out here if you'd like. Um, or you can reach out to the Office on Youth, we'd be happy to help you with that.
We've included the schools with this effort, and some of the schools are able to participate. So hopefully we'll have some of the pinwheel gardens in front of some of the schools. Um, so we're very happy, and we've reached out to all of the county employees as well. And we've already had a decent response of orders for the pinwheels, so we're very pleased.
So basically, we just want to spread the word about the campaign, to look, listen, and respond. Um, to wear blue on April 9th, and to wear your ribbons as much as you can, at least in the month of April, and to also purchase a pinwheel.
And actually, April 9th will be when our pinwheel gardens actually appear. We're going to be out on the 8th planting them, so...
And lastly, this is from Prevent Child Abuse Virginia. Um, the, we all play a role when it comes to the healthy development of our nation's children. And one other thing that the Office on Youth is doing is we have a couple of upcoming classes that are going to be offered to just help with parenting and that sort of thing. There's four listed on that, on that sheet. Um, one is a Thinking for Change Program. Um, that's actually for the youth ages 13 to 18. One is a parenting class called Positive Action Parenting for parents of youth ages 13 to 18, and they're going to be held simultaneously, so hopefully it can be a family event and childcare is provided. Um, the classes are free, and you can attend on a referral basis, basically. Um, and then we're also providing a 1-2-3 magic class, which is a disciplinary class for parents on the eastern end of the county later this spring. And we're going to have another training opportunity for those who are interested in teaching the Strengthening Families program um, the beginning of May. Um, and another one, actually, the beginning of June, we're going to have two training opportunities so that we can definitely keep that program going and strengthen families in, in Orange County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next is the Business Spotlight. Mike Willis. I haven't seen him either, so we'll hold that off for now. Uh, so we'll go to the Parks and Recreation Quarterly Report, Tim Mubry.
Good afternoon. Thanks for the opportunity to present. I'll wait for the snapshot to get switched up on there. I touched base on a few things on the snapshot. Uh, we had successful winter programs. We had 30 in our gymnastics program, and they competed against Green, Madison, and Stewart's draft, and did very well. We had 83 in our gymnastics program. And for the spring session, we've looked to go to Friday nights and Saturday mornings to increase our enrollment and meet the needs of more folks. So gymnastics program is very successful. We sold 46 passes to Massanutten for the License to Slide program this year. We've worked at a deal with NET for next year that when we can turn in the passes that we have for lessons and continue to sell just the lift ticket and rental, because after we turned them in this year, we got a ton of snow and head calls about them. So next year, we'll be able to sell the non... Folks take the lessons the first year, and then they just come back for the lift ticket and rental. And, uh, so we've worked that out to sell more past the deadline next year. Uh, Tai Chi, we've gone to a punch card system instead of a monthly payment, and it's worked out very well. A lot of our Tai Chi participants are seniors, and you pay for a monthly fee, and you miss a class, you've lost that. But with the punch card, they only use it when they go and punch it, and $40 for four punches, so it's worked out very well for them. Um, along those same lines, uh, April 26th is World Tai Chi Day, and we're looking to do some kind of event here in Orange, possibly with a coffee shop here in one of the parks. And Tai Chi with chai tea, kind of a little interesting event, and hope to get some awareness about it. Um, our, we have our theme park tickets in now, Kings Dominion, Busch Gardens, and Water Country, and we are selling those. Our movie tickets, Regal Cinemas. In January of 2012, I thought to try this program. We bought 50 tickets and made them available with a small markup to consumers. And since then, we've restocked eight times with orders occasionally up to 200. And in two years, we've sold 805 tickets and hoped to break the thousand mark this year. So huge, $7.50, it's a huge savings to folks, and we have people coming in to buy 10 or 12 at a time. So, um, it's been a very good program. And to touch on our adult dodgeball league, there'll be more on this in the slideshow, but we had 60 adults come out to play like kids, and they had a very good time. To our slideshow.
Yeah, do we get the slideshow here, or are we...
I apologize for the technical difficulties.
Do we need to put that in the budget?
Where'd the mouse go?
We don't even, we don't even have a mouse anymore.
The mouse disappears. Oh, there we go. All right, from the beginning, our OCPR highlight reel. There we go, we got it. As you can see, our Rapid安River Day was a big success, and the Orange Review did a full-page article on it, and we liked it and got it framed at Buchanan and Keegel. Jeff Poole sent us the, the, uh, actual size display, Kinko's printed it. And, uh, we liked that one so well, we went back through the couple of years that I've been here and looked at all the front-page articles we had. They see some comments pulled out from the Rapid安River Day. Um, our next one we did was the Liberty Ride, was actually the first one. And if you can see on the picture, this actually was... The part in the middle was on a separate page, and this bottom one was actually in a totally different newspaper. And Jeff put them together to look like one full page, so, um, that was the Liberty Ride. Our next one, the High Rollers Class, we actually got a two-for-one on this deal. The High Rollers Classic we did with the, for the wheelchair team in the food bank. And at the bottom, there's an article on our first Hershey Track and Field Meet where a young man from Locust Grove qualified for the Nationals and got all expense paid from Hershey to Hershey, Pennsylvania, and finished fourth in the nation in the standing long jump, so quite an achievement. The next one was our Fourth of July Playing in the Park Celebration. And, uh, we are looking forward to that again. It was a big hit, and we will be doing it again. It'll be July 5th this year. And, uh, already had sponsorship coming in. Community has been very well, so we're looking forward to that. And our most recent one was our Dodgeball. And, uh, you can see the little articles up there. The folks had a great time in Dodgeball this year. Uh, as you can see from this next Wednesday, our for Dodgeball. And that was our, we missed quite a few with, with, uh... Oh, you're not seeing it.
He wants to stay in the budget.
But damn it, the show's over now.
Oh, my God.
I just need you to turn it on. Thanks, Larry. Well, does that say for all of us?
You only missed the pictures of the slides in the comments, so that wasn't bad. But our Wednesdays are for Dodgeball. We have some... These were the teams in order of finish, and our Port County team is from the Treasurer's Office. They did so well, and they tried so hard, but didn't win a match. They had Rose Deale, Dodgeball ninja, and she was very good. But, uh, as I'll go through, I'll tell what the teams were. This is a team of Locust Grove Elementary School teachers. They finished fifth. A team from North Anna Power Plant finished fourth. From Arrow Jet, they finished third. And then these other, the top two teams were coed softball teams that played against each other all... And they kind of divided amongst themselves to make the top two teams. Second place was the Orange County Ballers. And first place was our only team with a sponsor, the Feigning Goats, sponsored by Chestnut Hill Bed and Breakfast. So they won the league, but we have a few action shots of folks involved in the game. Everybody having fun. Nobody got hurt. A great thing. And you see at the bottom our photo gallery. You can go to the Parks and Rec page, and we have lots more pictures of not just this, but many of our events. And our last slide is about our upcoming program. We're going to do an adult kickball league. We have two teams signed up, but another three hopefully come in the next week or so, and so we'll hope that'll go. We have a Hershey Track and Field Meet coming up in May. And we're doing a new event, Michael's Mile. It's a, they do the Bulldog Bolt in Gordonsville, and the kids run it in Orange. We're doing a kids' run at the East End at Locust Grove Primary School. And the funds will be split between Michael's Gift, which is our scholarship program for youth activities, and the other half will go to the Parks and Recreation Foundation to help put a walking trail in around the complex down there. Any questions?
What's next?
Oh, we'll see. We have lots coming up, so, thank you.
Thank you, too. All right, uh, Community Needs Assessment by Skyline Cap, Brandy Day.
Before I get started, I do have...
Is this the same thing we had?
Yes.
So, thank you all for, for having us here. This Needs Assessment is something we do every year, and we like to get the information out to the community um, as thoroughly as possible. And I'm just going to give you a brief overview here, as you have the, the full copy there for you. For those of you who may not be familiar with Skyline Cap, we are a community action agency. We are promoting self-sufficiency through education, housing, stability programs. Our primary service area is Madison, Green, and of course, Orange Counties. But we also provide Head Start Services and a larger area that includes Page, Rappahannock, Shenandoah, and Warren Counties. We were established in 1990 and have been serving Orange County since 2000. This annual Needs Assessment is part of our own internal process for assessment and also part of our grant requirements, where we look at what's going on in the community and match that up with the services we're providing to make sure that what we're doing is having an impact. So in the summary of our results, we come up with these four rather broad categories. Full-time opportunity, employment opportunities and services to aid residents. Uh, promotion of education primarily through early childhood education and services to help high school students. Safe, affordable housing for renters and homeowners. And then financial empowerment for low-income individuals. The beginning of this process is an overview of community, community demographics. We know that information on what's happening with the population, the housing stock, and the economy, uh, you know, ultimately reveals our impact with regards to poverty in the community. So we have a brief overview here. There are many more demographics in your, in your, in the full packet. So Orange County is the largest in our three-county service area. Um, it grew 143% from 1970 to 2010, is expected to grow another 33% through 2040. We have household growth occurring at a rate of .8% annually, or 4.4% between 2013 and 2018. We've had steady income growth, except for a small dip in 2008, which of course, recession-oriented. Um, we've been going up, and we're now, um, just below Green County at 58,673. That's as of 2012. Orange County's poverty rate declined from 2011 to 2012, which is also consistent with national and state trends. So we went from 2.7% to 10% in 2012. And here we have...
What happened to Madison to make them jump up so much?
We don't know. I mean, something, something we're looking at. It could be simply, um, a calculation. Um, but there's no other indicators of anything... Um, no other significant indicators related to employment or anything. Um, so unemployment here in the county, the red line is the United States. The line below that is Orange County. So you'll see Orange County is below national averages as far as unemployment, but a little bit above state averages. Um, as of January 2, 2013, it was at 7%. Um, educational attainment, this is one area where Orange County is really doing well. Um, you have, um, higher percentage of people with a bachelor's degree and lower percentages of people with a, um, a high school degree or a high school degree only. Among the clients that Skyline Cap serves, we have approximately 77% of our clients who are from Orange County and have a high school degree or less. And education is, of course, one of the primary indicators of future financial success. Housing tenure, there was a general increase going nationally, uh, which was reflected here of an increase in renters. Uh, part of the foreclosure process. And generally, people being afraid to purchase a home. That's projected to decline ever so slightly through 2018, which is a good indicator for the housing market. And here's the home foreclosures. It's been the most significant thing on Skyline's radar with regards to Orange County is it's much higher than the rest of our service area. We've done a lot to outreach to this community to let them know about the foreclosure prevention services that we have. And here's a brief overview of our clients. Orange County is the majority of Skyline Cap's clients at 39%. And most of those are in our Housing Choice voucher program. We serve approximately 315, um, throughout Orange, Madison, and Green Counties. And I think 150-ish of those are in Orange County. And then here we get to what we actually learned. We, the third part of this process, after we look at what's going on with our own clients and what's going on with demographic trends, is that we have an actual survey that we submit to members of the community. So we had over 100 surveys returned to us this year and use those to identify needs.
When you say you serve, uh, the 100 members of the community, who were those? Who were the people that you actually surveyed?
They are a wide-ranging group. Um, of course, our clients are a big majority of those, because we have easy access to them. But we also put the survey online on our website and encourage people. So we have general members of the community, other people who work in, in nonprofits and social service agencies as well. So this, um, shows the, shows information just for those people from Orange County who responded and how they value the various services that Skyline Cap provides. Um, Head Start is not one of the services we provide here in Orange Counties. It's done through the public schools, but, um, was perceived as its being significantly important, as were all of ours. Project Discovery is also a service that we do not provide in Orange County. It is a college access program for high school students, where we only provide it in Madison County. But our, our housing services are, are well-received here and generally thought of as important contributions to the community. So we also take this information with regards to the overall impact of poverty. We look at both poverty prevention... We look at both poverty prevention and poverty alleviation. With regards to poverty prevention, that is looking at, uh, three main categories, which is education, employment and marital and family status. We've got a report from the Brookings Institution that concludes that young people can virtually ensure that they and their families will avoid poverty if they follow three elementary rules for success. Complete at least a high school education, work full-time and wait until age twenty-one and get married before having a baby. So that's something that we are considering in the overarching scope. And then of course, poverty alleviation, which most directly fits with our mission of promoting self-sufficiency. We look at stable housing and then human capital investments, which for us includes financial skills education and job skills education. And again, more details about the impact of these specific categories is in the report. So this chart actually shows you, and I apologize, it's kind of small, I wanted to get it all on one page. The categories that were in our survey, I have highlighted those where there was a significant difference in one of the categories. And I've shown you here how they were broken out by the counties. So in Orange County, lack of good paying jobs with benefits, not something that's terribly surprising to any of us, um, was the highest ranking need, followed by lack of quality affordable housing to rent, which we found to be a little odd because Orange County does have the largest supply of affordable housing. As far as subsidized housing in our community. Few jobs for people without skills, that's also consistent with the need for paying jobs. The need for emergency financial assistance during a temporary crisis. That was also one that ranked higher in, in Orange County than in others. And there were a few others down at the bottom that ranked lower. And unfortunately foreclosure prevention counseling was among those, which is why we're again, expanding our outreach opportunities to let people know what's available.
Is this still from your hundred-person survey?
Yes. So then we think about, take all that information, which was a lot and there's more in your packet, um, and figure out what that means for us and our community. So we do not have the, the means or capacity to address the employment issue in the county. So we, we look at two, three and four from our list, which is the education, housing, stability and financial empowerment. We take pride in being a community action agency where we are focused specifically on the communities we serve and can adapt our programs and services to best meet exactly what's going on here. And as I've mentioned, we're expanding our outreach because we want to have a broader impact on the community. We've also taken these survey results as well as, uh, those from previous years into account. And in two thousand and thirteen, did make some changes to our services. We discontinued our emergency financial assistance program to better meet our mission of promoting self-sufficiency. We decided that the, the one-time allocation of funds was not giving us the longer-term impact that we needed on our clients. And we also sought a grant in two thousand and thirteen to be able to provide home repair services in Orange County. Something we'd previously only done in Green County and thanks to a grant from the Bambam Works Fund. We did that. We worked in partnership with Rapid and Better Housing and we have determined that there's still an ongoing need where we focus on seniors, people with disabilities and other vulnerable populations such as households with children. And so we are again, this year seeking funding to be able to continue to provide those services.
Do you work with any of the volunteer groups that helped to restore housing or do repairs? There's a lot of churches and other groups that within the, uh, the area that, that do this. Do you have any coordination with them or help them identify recipients?
We, in our outreach, we, we did as much as we could as far as contacting other social service agencies. But because we are new in providing the service to Orange County, I'm certain that there were some groups that we were not aware of and did not contact. And we'd love to be made familiar with those.
How do you reach out to people in, in the community to, to know that they have the need?
Well, we coordinate closely with Department of Social Services and other social service providers in the community. We try to make them aware of all our programs, you know, regular communication. We have a Facebook page that we're hoping will, will get out more.
So primarily social services is where.
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that they are most likely to see our target population.
I mean, you've got Habitat for Humanity and a number of churches that, that get involved in this. And there's a lot of volunteers which can extend the, uh, I mean, would seem to me that if you've got cash, working with volunteer groups to, uh, extend the value of that cash would be pretty, uh, could be pretty worthwhile.
That's correct. And if I might speak, um, that is something that we do work, the groups that we do work with, Rapid and Better Housing Corporation, Cindy Reed through works in Madison and also here in, in Orange County. And she's very much of a resource and we do have to leverage those funds. So we do work with volunteers. Um, I know there's a couple of, uh, there's a women's group who build, women who build and that type of thing that we've worked with as well. But as Brandy mentioned, um, as the funding comes in, then that's when we have to expand our reach. And certainly Habitat, we not only, well, we work especially with Habitat and the, uh, the financial skills part of it. We're working with those families to hang on to their homes. And some of the senior organizations, the Senior Center, Sarah works with the Senior Center in identifying, uh, uh, she's our housing counselor, identifying some of those groups that help us. They're not as, as abundant as we'd like it to always be, but, um, certainly do work with us.
One of the things that, uh, I saw in your report was that some people were complaining that some people get help that don't need it. And you indicated that, uh, some of the rules that HUD has, uh, preclude you from, uh, making what might be better judgments on your part. Do you feed back to HUD when you find these kind of constraints?
As opportunity permits, but it's not a specific targeted effort.
So you have limited resources, so you can't expand and do these things? Is that pretty much what we're hearing?
Oh, we have very limited resources.
So you, you don't have the, the staff or the ability to reach out and work with a lot of the other organizations very easily?
Um, that, that's certainly a factor, but, um, like with regards to the, um, home repair program, we have infrastructure in place and partnerships in place in Green County where we've been operating this for an extended period of time since nineteen ninety-two, I believe. But with our first foray into Orange County in two thousand and thirteen, uh, we did not have the opportunities to get up to speed and, and develop partnerships as we wanted to focus on getting the work done. So it is our standard operating procedure to leverage funds with in-kind donations and volunteers as we are able to coordinate that.
Mr. Frain, can I, can I answer your question too about reporting? And, you know, we do, uh, operate or work with Virginia Housing Development Authority. We work with HUD specifically, sit on boards to advocate for changes. But some federal, as we were talking about the federal programs, especially our Housing Choice voucher program, which is rental assistance, um, is under very strict HUD guidelines. And those aren't federal changes as much as we like to advocate. Well, but we do advocate.
Or should be maybe in some cases.
And there are ways and, and folk that make those, uh, comments, there are ways to, um, make us aware of it. Certain things, if they are within the guidelines, you know, it is very difficult, but.
I read your report, almost all of it. And this is sort of defining, I mean, the demographics and the statistics are depressing. And they maybe define what's needed. Is there any documentation that defines exactly what you do in all of these categories? In terms of what kind of service you provide, what it, what it is? I would be interested in seeing that at some point in the future. And also, uh, you indicate that your, you know, primary goal is poverty prevention and alleviate the impact of it. Uh, how do you measure the success of that? I mean, you've got your, uh, three out of four, uh, uh, scoring of how, how the clients and others that are involved in this business see it. But how do you know that, uh, in fact, you have helped somebody and two years downstream, they're self-sufficient? Do you have any of that kind of information?
At this point, no. We've spent the past year significantly enhancing our, our client follow-up process so that we are continuing to follow up with them on a regular basis. It's actually one of the weaknesses in the emergency assistance program, which was a significant amount of our client base. And the, the emergency situation did not allow for us to do follow-up. They would come to us and they needed their electric bill paid in the next hour or they were going to have cutoff. So, uh, we have expanded our services to have more of a focus on financial skills and education and longer-term housing counseling services. We are now hoping to get more of those long-term impacts and we are now following up with our clients.
I mean, I can understand somebody who's elderly and you're needing to give them a rental assistance or something like that. There's, there's not a lot of chance they're going to get better. But you also have a lot of younger people, uh, who maybe haven't managed well or have educational problems. So, uh, it would be interesting to see how that tracks out over a period of years.
Correct. And that is one of the areas and Brandy touched on that, that we are especially focusing on with our housing counseling and our renter counseling where they're receiving budgeting. When they come in to do their recertifications, they're not, they're assessed, um, and they're looked at. And, um, as Brandy, Brandy touched on, the, the follow-up comes in a three-month or a six-month to see where they were and where they are now. But especially with the housing counseling, we can, we can measure those successes through, um, foreclosure prevention. Loan, number of loans modified. Um, and those are reports that we have to send out if you're just finishing one as a matter of fact. So we do have some of those reports and, and measurements that we can give you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I had a question on, in, in some of your information in the detailed report, there's, there's a chart in there that talks about, uh, reason for not working last year. Either they didn't work at all or they worked just a little bit. And I was, I, I was curious as to some of the categories. There, there's some obvious ones, they're either retired or they're disabled or they're in school or they couldn't find work. But then there's a category called home or family, which by, has by far the largest set of numbers in it. Is that, what are they telling us in that? I mean, in some cases, it's over fifty percent of the people didn't work because of, is it they're staying home to care for children? Or, or parents or, I mean, what, what is, I, I was puzzled a little bit by that.
My understanding of this, of this information is that yes, it's people who are staying home to care for children or to care for parents. We find a lot of people, especially lower-income people. It's not, uh, financially beneficial for them to pay for childcare to go work a minimum wage job. So, uh, when you, when you have younger children in the home or children who are going to need after-school care or something of that nature. And then of course, there are still parents who just choose to make that.
I mean, in one category, seventy-seven percent of the husbands in families with children less than six years old didn't work because of quote, home or family. I mean, that, that's the one that first caught me and I said, I obviously I don't understand what this tells.
And you know, I, I, that was one that I highlighted in the report. Um, I found that one interesting as well. But you know, this is national data and they don't give me a briefing on it, so I can't explain it further.
If you could provide us some detail on, on how you go about trying to, uh, work with clients and solve some of these problems.
And I also just want to let you know, we are coming up on Community Action Month in May. And as part of that, we have a poster contest for all school-aged children, ages three to eighteen in our three county service area. So that information's on our website. Our, our theme for this year is Prepare to Win. And that's based on the quote from Zig Ziglar that you've got on the, on the front. So we're hoping to inspire our children to really think positively about their future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next we have public comment. How many people do we have signed up?
Thirteen.
Okay. I would ask that y'all try to limit yourself to around three minutes. I don't need cheering or anything else, just present what you have to present, please. I think why, we know why you're here, so we, we understand, present your information, but if we could, try to keep it down in time. Okay?
First speaker is Doug Duncan, one zero three two four Gospel Hill Road.
Good evening. You all know me as a member of the school system and I've been there for over thirty years. And you're expecting me to speak in support of night of, of the school board budget. And I won't disappoint you. I'll tell you right now, yes, I do support the school board budget. However, that's all the support that you're going to hear from me about that. I actually came for a different reason tonight. I have been a resident in Orange County now for over thirty years. I'm a resident in District Two. Though many of you have heard from me on various occasions about various issues, I tend to do most of my speaking with you individually. Tonight I came because I wanted to offer some specific thanks in the budget process. The first thanks I'd like to offer are, is a thanks to Mr. David. In the time that I've been here, the transparency in the budget that he presented to you is the greatest level of transparency I think I've ever seen. As a taxpayer, I appreciate that. I understand what it is that's being supported and I can appreciate why it's being supported. The next thanks actually comes to you as a board. For your support of the budget that he presented to you and advertising the tax rate that you did. As a resident of this county, I have watched what's happened with our business and industry community for over thirty years now. I know that as we try to court businesses and industries to come to Orange County, one of the things they look at is how we invest in ourselves. How we invest in supporting the citizenry of the county. The budget that you have supported and the tax rate that you've advertised goes a long way to do that. It's the boldest step that I've seen a board of supervisors in Orange County take for quite some time. I am certain, given the history that we have in this county, that you're going to hear folks individually and in your public hearing, talk with you about the fact that they think it's too large a tax increase. I'm here to tell you as a taxpayer, I am very satisfied with the tax rates you advertised. My hope is that you will continue to support it throughout and make a statement to all those looking at Orange County as a place to bring business and industry and make a statement to all of us as citizens in the county that we do invest in ourselves, we value ourselves in the services that we provide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second speaker is Dave Castal.
I'm here to also say thank you. I'm a, an employee of Orange County Schools. I actually reside in Charlottesville. So, uh, I've been here for about eight years. And in the eight years I've been here, I've been a, a school counselor both at Prospect and at the high school. Most recently at the high school for the past four years. And with the, uh, the tax increase and the, uh, school board's, uh, proposal and, and, and hopefully the funding that'll become available. I want to thank you for moving, for allowing us to maybe move testing out of the counseling department so that we can actually be counselors and, and work with students. In the four years that I've been here, uh, at the high school, I want to share with you some deep concerns I have about the increase in drugs, alcohol. I want to, I want to share with you the mental health issues that we have run into since the economic downturn. The families that are so stressed that the kids are truly suffering. And it's us that they come to and, and many times through the testing process, just at the high school, for instance, we have a full-time counselor that we lose as a counselor that's really a testing coordinator for over a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty days out of the school year. And that's a tremendous burden for the rest of us, but it's also, uh, it, it, it just does not allow us to serve the students that are truly in need. And I'm telling you, they're in need. I'm there every day on the, on the front. And, uh, and I ask for your continued support so that we can provide for the youth of this county a chance so that we don't have the poverty levels, we don't have the dropout rates. And that we can attend to some of the new things that the Virginia Department of Education is asking the counseling, uh, department to do. We have a new academic and career curriculum that is, uh, probably another twenty to thirty days, uh, a year that a counselor is going to have to spend with you. But it's a great program because the, it gives kids direction, it gives them goals. And it's something we haven't been able to do for a couple of years. And it's, it's all new program. So I want to thank you. I don't know any of you except for that lady. But, uh, it was kind of interesting to come in here tonight and look at you and see what, uh, the supervisors of Orange County are about. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Hannah Smith.
Hello, my name is Hannah Smith. Um, I'm a seventh grader at Prospect Heights Middle School, and I like to talk about STEM. So, I'm a part of the Mustachio Peanuts at Prospect Heights, and this is my first year doing robotics. When I was in elementary school, I would've loved to have seen a STEM program prosper there. Although, when I came to Prospect, I was scared to join Lego Robotics because I knew nothing about it, and I knew Orange Elementary knew everything about robotics by the stories I've heard. Well, these stories have stayed with me, and I pondered on the idea of joining this really cool robotics team I heard on the morning announcements, First Tech Challenge. After school, I decided to Google it, and oh my, you wanna talk about awesome? It's just remarkable. Just to think, kids my age and slightly older can think creatively and innovatively through their robot design represented by their engineering notebook. Now, you may be wondering why we need to develop this type of hands-on learning to our students in Orange County. Well, first, it helps us learn and grow together as individuals and as part of a group. Secondly, it helps us become better designers, programmers, and engineers. And thirdly, if you provide students with hands-on learning, it will help them, it will, if you provide students with hands-on learning, it will make them think in a different way rather than the typical classroom setting. If it wasn't for the hard work of Mr. and Mrs. Gray and my teacher, Supporting First, I would not have been able to participate in many challenging events this year. The Gray family has been very supportive of me and my group in our endeavors to continue robotics. Mr. Gray also hosted a women's engineering conference in Crystal City. I was fortunate to attend this meeting and listen to female engineers tell me about their experiences with engineering. You can see the passion in their eyes for the love of their job. The stories they shared made me think, what should I choose for my career path? I first thought of being a corporate lawyer before I attended this meeting, but now I want to be an ocean engineer. They work with underwater robots, aircraft carriers, submarines, tankers, tug, tug boats, sonar, and any structure needed to be built in the ocean or to glide across it. There are very few female engineers in our society, and many companies demand the need for them. We have local businesses in Orange with engineers. But one of those engineer, but out of those engineers in Orange, guess how many are female? Zero. This is the biggest reason why we need to step up and rise as leaders, improve the world our worthiness as females. I think we should have a female engineering kickoff in Orange to show young ladies that it's okay to go into a male-dominated field. I think we should teach STEM to students, and this will help them as they get older to have jobs, families, and pay bills. Our world is rapidly changing and new products are being made. And without the knowledge of STEM, how will we be able to operate the new devices? Or better yet, create them ourselves? How will we ever end up like Albert Einstein, thinking and experimenting with different items and promote us to create, imagine, and make our future a reality? Thank you for the, your time in considering putting money towards supporting STEM. Also, thank you to Mr. and Mrs. Gray for giving me these opportunities, as well as Orange County School Board and Board of Supervisors for being supportive of these programs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well done.
Next speaker is Pam Smith.
Well, I'm her mother, and that's hard to follow. And I didn't write it, I swear, she wrote it. Thank you for having us here tonight. I also am coming in support of STEM. It's a wonderful program that I've been involved with just this year through Hannah. I've been a resident of Orange County for forty-six years, so now I'm just told my age, so I'll go sit down. Over my years in Orange County, there've been, uh, a few programs that I've been very, very passionate about and feel that have supported our youth greatly. Uh, watching Hannah through robotics is one of those, and not just robotics, everything that STEM, you know, does to support the children. The teachers have also been passionate about it, and Hannah has been able to take part in some very good programs this year, of which she also told you about, the engineering program. She wanted to be a lawyer, but she came home and said, now I'm gonna be an engineer, so. STEM, and more specifically FIRST, is one of the best programs that I've ever seen. It fosters creative thinking and imagination while using core values of science, math, technology, and engineering. It supports working as a team where no member is greater than the other member and must rely on each other in order to meet a common goal. FIRST also has an expectation of gracious professionalism, which I adore. Among its members, the word gracious means to be polite in a way that shows respect, while the word professionalism means, um, the skill, good judgment, and polite behavior that is expected from a person who is trained to do a job well. This program teaches our children to act as ladies and gentlemen, be respectful, be mindful of others' feelings, agree to disagree respectfully, and to allow, and to always act in a professional way in which they were trained. What if this behavior was fostered in our everyday lives as well as our vocations? By supporting the STEM program, you can begin a good work, nurture it, and watch it grow. You will also be able to watch our youth become more competitive in colleges, as well as in job markets. In the words of President Barack Obama regarding STEM, and I quote, "America's young people will rise to the challenge if given the opportunity. If called upon to join a cause larger than themselves, we've got evidence. You know the average age in NASA's mission control during the Apollo seventeen mission was just twenty-six. I know that young people today are just as ready to tackle the challenges of this century," end quote. STEM also has an initiative to largely support women students and researchers. It is stated, and I quote, "Women in STEM are not only a part of America's strategy to out-innovate, out-educate, and out-build the rest of the world, it is also important to women themselves." With one daughter who just graduated from George Mason University with a degree in biology and a ma- a minor in forensic science, I can tell you that she would've benefited largely from a program like this in Orange County schools. And it would've given her ability to explore greater opportunities within the science field prior to attending college. No one is interested in hearing the word "tax increase." However, I understand that four cents of the proposed eight-cent tax increase is for Orange County schools. In your fiscal responsibility, I ask you to please consider the amount in the proposed budget for the STEM program. I ask that you think about the future of our children and their ability to develop industry in our own community. These children will one day pay it forward, as they have seen by your example. Thank you.
You might mention to your daughter that they're taking, uh, women on nuclear submarines these days.
Wow, that sounds like fun.
As long as you're not claustrophobic, everyone's a small.
Next speaker is Thomas.
Hard enough living above ground with men, can you imagine being underwater with them? Please.
Good evening. My name's Tom Dixon, and I'm the choral director at Orange County High School. Uh, I'm in my sixth year of teaching here in Orange County. And I've been at the high school for all six years, and this year, I've had the great fortune of also being, uh, a pull-out choral director in, uh, Locust Grove Middle School and Prospect Heights Middle School. And what I can tell you about our students is that they're some of the greatest kids that I've ever come and gone and interacted with, that I've had the pleasure to teach and be a part of. Uh, now, March is, uh, Youth Art Month and, and Music in Our Schools Month, and we've had a great time celebrating that all month at, in, uh, throughout Orange County schools. This previous, uh, weekend was our annual Fine Arts Fair. And we've started a tradition with, uh, uh, middle school choral programs to, uh, invite those students to come and sing with the high schoolers. So, Friday around one o'clock, and I can just assure you that this is both a, an awesome and crazy experience all at the same time, all wrapped into one. Uh, about eighty middle schoolers come and show up, uh, and we make music for the entire afternoon, on mu- on music that they've worked on for, uh, their, their spring concerts and assessments, and music that the high schools worked on too. And as, as this was all going on, you know, I'm, I'm teaching and helping to conduct this music, and I see these kids in their faces and the joy that that brings them when they sing. And I think that that's really, um, that speaks to the testament of the power of music in kids' lives. And I, I'm here to tell you that I'm in support of this, this budget, this, the school board budget that you are, uh, helping to fund. Because without these extra, uh, e- e- extra activities in, in kids' lives and music education in kids' lives, uh, this is sometimes some, one of the only things that the students have to look forward to when they come to school. Uh, one of the things that they greatly look forward to. And I thank you for that, uh, opportunity to, to teach them. I encourage you to continue to fund that, uh, that, the tax increase, uh, so that the, the schools can, uh, continue to provide these services for our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jeanne Ktolka, two seven nine four nine, Old Office Road.
Thank you. I'm Jeanne Ktolka, and I also work for Orange County Public Schools, but also have four children who graduate, well, three, one hopefully here soon, will graduate from Orange County Public Schools. One's in college, one's working, one's in a trade school, and then hopefully this last one will also go to college and have had a great education. I really wanna thank the school board for their leadership that they provided in recommending our current school board budget. That's a very inappropriate budget. I also particularly wanna thank them for recognizing that our counselors have not been in the classroom and that we need some, some support in there, and we've taken a look at some positions for that, and I, and I wanna thank them for it. I also wanna commend the county administrator for putting full, uh, for the, putting forward the budget that he recommended, the tax increase. And it's very robust, like Mr. Duncan said. And I think it shows a lot of insight and a lot of thought about what we need in our county, not just related to education, but related to what we need for law enforcement and our emergency management system as well. I think that's a critical, as we look forward to what our county, uh, what our county needs. Finally, I just really want you to take a look. You have other inside information about what's going on in the county, and you need really to look. And it's a hard decision to say I'm gonna increase our tax rate by eight cents. But I do think it's important to look at that and make some good decisions. Sometimes, the right decision is not the easiest decision to make. And you have to stand out there and be bold and make that. And I would encourage you to look at that and, and to really support, continue to support, if you've done in the past, our school board budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanne.
Next speaker is Janice Sidell, resident of Locust Grove.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard today, and thank you for moving the meeting time to a time where most working people can get here. I appreciate that. I'm Janice Sidell, I teach kindergarten at Locust Grove Primary School, but I'm also a tax-paying, voter-ing citizen of Orange County. I graduated from Orange County High School a long time ago. And I have taught both at Lightfoot and Locust Grove Primary Schools here in the county for a long time also. My children attended Orange County High School for their entire school career. I have a daughter that's now attending Germana, so she's still in Orange County and a son at Longwood. So, I am proud to say that I live and work in Orange County. My family has lived in and owned businesses and property in Orange County for over thirty years, and I'm proud to say that. And I wanna continue to be proud to say that. And I'm here to say thank you because I too fully support this tax increase that you've proposed. I think our county needs to move forward and improve the assets that this county is blessed with. Taking this forward-thinking approach is meeting the current and future needs of our county, and it's the best way to do this. I think it's also time to fully fund the school board request for the budget. I'm proud of our schools and what we accomplish daily, especially with the budget restrictions that we do have. I did some research, and based on the two thousand thirteen State Board of Education Superintendent's Annual Report, Orange County spends less per pupil than most counties in Virginia. We spend less than all of the surrounding counties of Albemarle, Culpeper, Green, Madison, Louisa, and Spotsylvania County. Less per pupil every year. Orange County spends thirty-one hundred ninety-eight dollars per pupil, and the closest amount to that is Green County. They spend thirty-eight hundred eighteen dollars per pupil. And then, the highest is Albemarle County, and I know it's hard to compare Orange to Albemarle because it's Charlottesville, but they spend eight thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars per pupil. So, more than twice the amount of, per pupil, per st- or per year than we do. So, the, the budget, the money that Orange County's asking for, isn't really asking for a gold-paved road in every school. It's just asking for the support and funding that we really need to continue to the, to excel and improve the schools that we have. With that being said, it's time to open the Locust Grove Elementary School as its own building. Did you know that Locust Grove Elementary School has over four hundred and thirteen students? That's just third through fifth grade. And then the middle school has over six hundred and forty students. So, combined, it's over eleven hundred students in one building. There's only one bill, other school in the county, the high school, that has that many. And it's time to move those kids back into their own building. It was physically responsible to wait, and I understand that, but it was also okay to wait because the elementary school students and the middle school students were gonna be separated by the floor. Well, now, the second grade in my school, the Locust Grove Primary School, is so big that they would have to separate some classrooms and move them into, with the middle school's students to accommodate. That's not really the great thing you wanna do. Don't mix these younger kids with the older students. And I have read, just like all of you guys have, and heard the negative and positive comments about this planned tax increase. And what stuck out to me was when reading and hearing the negative, it's always, or not always, mostly, I should say, about what was done wrong in the past. Well, the past is the past, and I believe we can learn from that, but I also believe that we need to look forward to continue to improve Orange County. Thank you for this budget, but the tax increase is, it might be painful to the pocket now, but it's what we need to do to make the good decisions that will continue to move the county forward. Policies and needs will always be changing and improving, but, and using the past as a reason not to plan for the future is in no one's best interest. Again, I thank you, and I ask you to fully support your planned tax increase, listen to the needs and hopes for this county, and continue to make it a place that we're all proud to live and serve in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is John Lentine, four seven thirty road.
Good evening. My name is John Lentine, and I live at Lake of the Woods. I'm the current art teacher at Locust Grove Primary School. I want to also thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight, and I thank you for all the work you do on behalf of all of us. I'm also in support of the, the budgets that's proposed and, and also encourage you to, to keep strong in supporting that, uh, tax rate. I've always found Orange schools, Orange County schools, to be a welcoming and nurturing place to be. It's a place where students grow toward their real potential, where their dreams are realized, and not only the students, but the teachers as well. Now, Tom mentioned that it's Youth Art Month this month. And so, to that end, since I'm an art teacher, I'm gonna make you guys my art students tonight. And we are going to paint a painting. Now, you ask, well, how about materials? Well, your decisions are the colors on your palette tonight. So, I'm asking you to, to, that let's work together and paint a very bright picture. I'm gonna color my comments with language of art, talking about the elements of art, line shape, colors, textures, and value and form. The most basic element of art is line. And so, we need to have a, a little sketch here first, understand how we start. The line that brought me here was a very long one. I taught in Alaska for twenty-seven years before I came here. I taught at twenty-two schools at one time. And I was very happy when I came here, I mean, I, I thought I was going to retire, but the shape of my retirement wasn't really for me. And I needed more color than the green of mowing my lawn. So, I wanted to teach again. And miracle of miracles, I found a school right in my own backyard, Locust Grove Elementary School, and they needed an art teacher. My goodness, where do you find that? So, and it was one school, not twenty-two, and that was great. I could finally design the single art classroom that I always wanted to do, and I thought that was cool. And so, I got to realize my dreams, I got to be born again as a teacher. Now, that brings me to my first point. That was cool, but soon the gr- school grew so large, it had to be split into two. And as Janice just said, you know, we, they took the kids over to the, the news, uh, middle school, and you know the whole story there. Well, you know, now, all three schools are big. And, and I'm in support of bringing the fly-in those Locust Grove Elementary Eagles back to that empty nest which is next to our, uh, school. So, that's my first point. I'm encouraged by that, what I hear from you all about that. Now, let's just see how your paintings are going. Shannon, let me see, oh, you've always got a, you've got some good lines there, Shannon. And Lee, you're doing really well around the ages, you, you know, you're- And Lee, you're doing really well around the ages. You, you know, you're, you're good at working with frames. Very good. So... Alright.
I am so glad there were no ab jokes here. Cause buddy, you would have gotten some good lines.
I'm not done yet, okay. To, uh, my second point.
No, he can keep talking.
Colors have value, shades. Over my seven years here now, I've seen many changes or shades in the colors of orange. I saw that soon it, like the rest of the country, was cast in a big, dark shade of financial challenge that hit us especially hard. I saw colleagues spread over their jobs. I saw them lose their jobs. I saw meeting after meeting where dedicated people such as you grappled with these problems, and you still do. We're doing it right now. But worst of all, I saw families and teachers move to other districts to what seemed to be better opportunities. Now, I'm really encouraged by what you're doing with this budget and what the school district has done. And so it just makes me feel good that that is going to encourage the students and the teachers to stay. Because it's just important that teachers feel value. And when salaries in districts right around them are, you know, are higher than mo- than, than ours, it's, it's tough to have that dedication, but they are. So, they're so dedicated, they stay here because of promise of better days. And so, um, we want to serve our children the best we can. So these are, our paintings are almost done, but I'm going to have to leave the rest of the work to you before you can say, voila, there it is. And I now encourage you to keep up those efforts in these two areas that not only affect the shape of us at our end of the county, but also the value of the whole county as well. Thank you. Nice view.
I figured there'd be a teal in there somewhere.
Teal, you're just not as popular as, like, you know.
Next speaker is Jude Melton, resident of Orange.
Uh...
Bring it around so we can see.
Thank you. Hello, hello everybody. I, my name is Jude Melton and I am a Gordon Barber student. And I'm going to say, um, teachers at Gordon Barber do more than they are asked. When I was in first grade, um, Mr. Bell, my teacher, visited me in the hospital, um, twice. This, um, it, I, I thought it was really nice of the teachers to do that. That is one of the stories of, um, all the amazing teachers I have and had, um, please support the school budget. That is, uh, that is all.
Thank you, thank you. That was very good.
Next speaker is Tim Cuser, resident of Orange.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for, uh, allowing public comment on the school board budget. I am in support, uh, of the tax increase and of the school board budget. My son Jude, um, is obviously a Gordon Barber student and proud to be a Gordon Barber student. Uh, I also have a Prospect Heights Middle School student. Um, I serve on the Gordon Barber PTO and the Prospect Heights PAB. Um, as a parent, I'm also a, a teacher, um, at PBCC and at UVA. So I get to see some of our products. Every semester I have one or two Orange County students in my classroom. So, uh, I'm vested in education, not only for my children, but for all of the children of Orange County and get to see a little bit of the products. So, as a trend that I think we've all been seeing in public school, in higher education, is that teachers are asked to do more and more with fewer resources. Parents are trying to step up and volunteer, but teachers are doing a really amazing job. Not only having a quality of education for our students, but trying to meet all of the standardized testing requirements and all of the state and federal mandates. However, given over time, a- as we limit resources, then inevitably someone's going to suffer. And probably that's going to be our students if we continue to have limited access to resources, to our teachers, to our administrators, and to the county as a whole. You know, just looking comparatively at Orange County High School with other high schools in the state, we d- we do have, not only do we have lower funding per pupil, we have a higher teacher-to-student ratio. We're below average in the state on college readiness standards. We're below average in the state, uh, on math proficiency. These are trends that all of us want to see reversed. And many times one step is exactly what you guys are proposing to do. To have a tax increase, to put more resources to- toward our schools. Because if we fail our students now at this educational level, then we're also failing ourselves. We're failing our community, and ultimately we're failing our society. So I'm just here to say, please, um, fully fund the school board budget. As a parent, as a volunteer, as a professor, as a taxpayer, a homeowner, and a voter in Orange County, I just want to say I'm full support of the tax increase. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Patty Lundston.
Good evening. I wasn't planning on speaking, but someone encouraged me and then wrote me a brief note. So bear with me. I have been a resident of Orange County for twenty years. I have a daughter at Gordon Barber. I, um, participate in the PTO there. I also have two daughters at Prospect Heights. And I participate on the PAB, and I also am on the Parent Advisory Committee. And I've been on that committee for two years for, uh, Gordon Barber. Bear with me. My husband, um, has been a team manager of a Destination Imagination Team for three years. Two years at Gordon Barber, and then that team of seven girls, who are also, um, girls in my Girl Scout troop, are now, have now graduated up to Prospect Heights. Um, so I am here to ask for your continued support in funding the, um, the student, the school budget. And also in particular for the gifted programs, the STEM program, and for the arts program. I am a software developer manager at SNL Financial. I am a minority in that organization as a female in the, um, as a technical female manager. I was a software developer at Liberty Fabrics for six years. I would still be at Liberty Fabrics if it was still here. And I know that in particular, women are a minority in engineering. And we need to support them, so please support the STEM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Caroline Raleigh, two five five two nine Magnolia Road Drive.
Good evening. I also work at the University of Virginia. I also have a degree from Purdue University and Bachelor of Science in Computer Engineering. So, huh, you go for it, girl. Um, I've been a resident of Orange County for about ten years. I've been in Virginia twenty-two years. Um, and I'm also in support of the budget, and I would really, um, like to have that school reopened. I have a second grader at Locust Grove Primary, an awesome school. Kudos to Sherry McGee. You have met several of these teachers here. It is a wonderful, wonderful school. I'm going to give you some statistics about third to fifth graders and sixth to eighth graders. Um, first of all, I'm going to give you their average heights, and this is from the CDC growth chart. Um, an average third grader is about four feet, two inches. That increases about two inches every year. So an average eighth grader is five feet, one inch. That's almost a foot difference. My husband is a foot taller than me, believe me. It's big. It's a big difference. And when you project that down to the school level, it can be a little intimidating. So another statex- de- bleh, sorry, statistics I want to give you, um, regards bullying. The Megan Meyer Foundation, which I'm not sure if you're familiar with, um, promotes awareness and education on bullying. At the sixth to tenth grade level, thirty percent of children are bullied. It's higher among sixth to eighth graders for males than females. And it's higher among ninth and tenth graders. The Connect Safety Study says as kids move up in grade, bullying increases. The Bridgewater State University study, um, or, I'm sorry, Bridgewater State University in two thousand and one did a study of twenty thousand children, um, in grades three through twelve. I'm going to concentrate on three through eighth. Sorry, I said three through six earlier. It's third grade through eighth grade. Of the fourteen thousand four hundred students followed and surveyed, in school, in elementary school, less than ten percent were bullied. In middle school, that jumps to thirty percent. Um, cell phones among children in third to fifth grade, about twenty percent in third graders have them. It jumps to eighty-three percent in sixth through eighth grade. Then introduces cyberbullying, um, which Megan Meyer Foundation, she was a victim of cyberbullying. Um, the percent of children being bullied and are target, or, who are targets of bullies, from third grade to fifth grade, thirty-five percent of boys and forty percent of girls. That jumps from sixth to eighth grade, fifty percent of girls and fifty-three percent of boys. I think it's really important to keep these grades separated. Programs that work for third graders and, and educate them about bullying don't work as well for eighth graders, and vice versa. It's the maturity level. You know, um, they're different ages, they respond to different forms of persuasion and education. So please open that school. Divide these children out. Let them be among their peers. Let them have some normal amounts of, um, economic, or not economic, but, uh, social development, so that they can be children. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Elena, or Elena Kessler.
Hello. I think this is the first time I've stood in front of all of you like this. I'm happy to be here tonight. Thank you for supporting our school budget. Most of you know I'm a school counselor. I've been a school counselor for eleven years. My first year was here in Orange County. I was split between Prospect Heights and I opened the middle school out at Locust Grove. Um, that year I wanted to stay, but I could not, I could not be a split counselor. Being a split counselor is a very difficult thing to do. Whenever something happens, at one school I'm at the other, and vice versa. So, um, Spotsylvania County recruited me. I left. Um, spent a lot of time in Spotsylvania County, learned a lot of things. Spent some time in Albemarle County, learned a lot of things, and now I'm home. And I've been home for four years and plan to stay. Um, currently I'm a, a, the school counselor at Locust Grove Middle School, one of them. There are two of us. However, I would say about forty percent of my time is spent testing. I test in March. Takes about three weeks. And then starting at the be- end of April, the beginning of May, I start testing again. And regardless of whether I have a relationship with a student, um, I'm not able to see them. So if they're having an anxiety attack, I can't see them. If they've had a bad morning or a fight with their parent, I can't see them. If they're hurt, I have to refer them to the other counselor. If they're talking about suicide, I can't see them. I have to test. That's my job. Testing has to go on. And so right now, um, the school counselors are asked to take on that responsibility, and it's difficult. I have a speech here, but I thought I would speak from the heart. Um, I think it works a little bit better. Our students need us. We're not guidance counselors anymore. We do careers, but we do so much more. We're often the first line of attack for our child abuse, abuse prevention that you heard tonight. Um, we deal with our homeless. Uh, we deal with students who have had fire in their homes. We deal with students in need at Christmas time. So all of those things were our first line of attack to make sure our children are taken care of. And when I can't do my job, I'm letting students down. And to have a student standing at your door crying, saying, please, Mrs. Kessler, can I talk to you? And having to say no, I got to go test. That's hard. So thank you for supporting the budget.
Thank you, Elena.
Next speaker is Kim Harris.
Hi, my name is Kim Harris and I'm a counselor at the high school, and I am the school test coordinator. And so I'm going to wrap a lot of these things that people have said to you together. Um, I've lived in this county since eighty-eight and have owned a home in, um, the, on District One since nineteen ninety-two. I've been with the school division since two thousand and one and, uh, for thir- for thirteen years, but, well, for twelve of those years, I have been a counselor and the school test coordinator. Elena just told you all the thi- all the days she spends testing, well, you can just multiply that by at least three because in the high school, we test more times a year, we test a lot more students, and it takes a lot more of my time. So yes, it's true. Uh, I have a hundred and ninety-four students assigned to me this year. And absolutely, when I'm testing, I am totally engrossed in testing. That's all I can do. Because we have certain standards we have to follow, it's very important that we do what we have to do. And she's right. Elena's absolutely right. Other people have to take up the, my responsibilities to my children, and I have to turn them down for things that I do not want to turn them down for. Unlike Elena, I'd like to continue to be the test coordinator. So I'm thanking you for supporting the test, the test, um, testing positions that are in the school board budget. Um, so that the students who, who need a full-time counselor can have a full-time counselor available to them. We have some wonderful students in this school district. I'm very proud of them. But it's very tough for them to be a, a teenager in these days with cyberbullying. You've heard about that. Um, you've heard about bullying with the drugs and alcohol. It's hard to be, it's hard to be a teenager. Courses are more rigorous now so that students can get into better schools. And they just need the opportunity to have those people who can guide them through their academic and career paths and to, um, give them those, that time that they need, uh, from a counselor who, um, can help them with their social development. So, um, as a taxpayer, I support wholeheartedly your, um, proposal to increase the tax rate so that we can get what we need for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hammond, that was our last speaker.
She was the last speaker.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, dinner recess was at six.
Do board comment real quick, will you?
Board comment is fine.
Um, I'd like to start, if you don't mind. While everybody's still in here, um, one of the things that, um, I want to say, thank you all for coming out because it's very evident that you support, um, you support our schools and you support our children. And for those of you who, um, do that and help our children, you can never be thanked enough. You know, Dave Costall is a rock star and he knows what I'm talking about. And I just think he's great because he made such an impact in my child's life. And, you know, I know the value of having that guidance counselor there for when, um, kids, uh, come up. It's a sad day if you really truly do have a child that comes to you and talks about suicide and you're, you have to get up and go take a test because, I mean, seriously, I would actually hope that y- you would tell them to shove the test because if somebody's talking about suicide, that means they're thinking about doing it. So I, I, um, please excuse my, um...
Back there.
Yeah, well, I mean, oh, that, that's not something to joke about, but, and I know I joke a lot. But anyway, um, I just want to say thank you to that. Um, but one of the things I, I do tell people when they call us, you know, this has to be conveyed to the school board. While, while we allocate the funds, we do not tell the school board how to spend the money. We can recommend it, but we can, we can write a check in, or I say we, but, you know, the county can s- allocate funds. And if the state doesn't do what the state says they're going to do, the federal government doesn't do what they say they're going to do, if something changes, our budget gets set before their budget gets set. So discussing the STEM program, discussing adding these testing positions in. If you do not convey this to the school board, then while you have members that come to our meetings, you still have to follow through and go to the school board meeting, and you have to do that. So fifteen of you came tonight, thirty of you need to go to their school board meeting. They need to know. Tell, tell Dr. Box to send out those mass emails to everybody. But, I mean, I, I'm joking about it, but they truly are the ones who, who set their budget. We, 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 we by state law have no say-so over how they spend, um, that budget. So I did want to, um, let you all know that. And then totally changing the subject, um, and, and Tim this weekend was, um, with us on... And then totally changing the subject, um, and, and Tim this weekend was um with us on Saturday at the Montpelier five K and um I just wanna say, um, I ran my first race, which is amazing in itself and I didn't have a heart attack and um, but I, I thought it was such a great event that um we did something here in Orange and a lot of times you have events like that and you look around and you go, I don't know anybody here. But there were so many people at that race from, from Orange County and um we, is, is Sam, were y'all there? I thought I made a sound, no, that's the funny. But they were, um, you know, we had, we had a really good time and um, you know, it was nice. A lot of county employees were out there, um, whether they were running or cheering people on and the community was out there and um I think we have a lot of great things that we do here in Orange and it's great that people take advantage of um those things and, and do the fun things that we get to do here in Orange. So I just wanted to say that and not only is Rose Deal the um dodgeball queen, she was also the racing queen. I mean, she blew past me and I was like, yeah. So, um, which everybody blew past me, I'm not gonna say that. Everybody except that one little kid. No, there was a kid that ran faster than me, I mean, he was this little dude and I was, it was amazing. A woman with a dog, the dog ran faster than I did on Saturday, but that's okay. No, but it was a great day, so um I, I just wanna um mention thank you to Montpelier for, for doing that because we had fun.
I would like to reiterate uh what uh, what Shannon said on the, on the individual programs. I've been contacted on a number of programs and, and I, I support the arts, I support the STEM and, and many of these other programs. Uh, I think that the, but uh I think what I, what we try to do is how much can we afford to give to the schools, given all the other uh demands we have in terms of uh limits by the state on uh, on what we can, what revenue we can weigh, raise. Uh, the state that gives us additional taskings without paying for them. And the other things that we have for public safety and past investment, uh, we've tried to allocate as much as we can. Uh, and I do like uh Brian's way of presenting it because it is more visible in terms of uh letting people understand uh some of the considerations we had and how we allocated it. But once we allocate it, uh you need to go to the school board to determine how we do it. We can support a lot of these functions, but we have to balance the school board budget as a whole against all of the other requirements we have.
Uh, one thing I'd like to say is thank you for the support for the budget. If that was the view of everyone in the county, it'd be a very easy decision. I can assure you, I receive as many phone calls and emails in the opposite direction. The one thing that I will say is I believe that this budget is probably the most transparent that has been prepared for a long time. County administrator has gone out and educated a lot of people in the public as well as board members have gone out and educated people. Um, it is not going to be an easy decision regardless of what we do. The most important thing is, is that we're getting involvement, not just from departments, school board, but from citizens on both sides. We're getting involvement, that is something that we have lacked for a long time is continuity between the people of this county to make a commitment, to be involved and know what's going on. And I think that will benefit everyone greatly and I encourage you to go out and talk to your neighbors, regardless of which side the fence they're on, as far as the taxes and what the school board does and what this board does, just get the involvement because the more involvement we have, the better off everyone will be. On a different note, when the fire service board had the town hall meeting uh with the different fire companies and everything, there was a young lady that was in here that spoke about having it, had a fire and almost lost her dog because the fire company did not have the resuscitation masks for the animals. Well, I met with the fire chiefs at their monthly meeting and they did have a number of the masks, they were not on the scene of that particular fire. But um since then, I talked to Beth Hamilton from the animal shelter and in her normal, average employee way, and that's slightly understated, she met with the Humane Society and raised the money to buy four additional mask kits which we now have and they'll be divided up uh between the fire and rescue companies. And Chief Harkness will be, um, he has a DVD that he'll be having available for people to be trained in it. And I just wanna say, when we have employees that go that extra mile, makes a world of difference. It's really nice to see um both there as well as in this room and just in the general county. But something positive for a change and makes me feel good, believe me. Thank you.
You have anything Jim?
Well, it, it's been said many times, but I think that from the budgeting standpoint, I, I believe it's, it becomes a community dialogue and part of what we've seen tonight is, is that community dialogue. I spent um my cup of, first cup of coffee this morning, have a community dialogue that had a little bit different perspective than this group, but, but it was still a community dialogue, you know where I was.
I know where you were too, I can only guess, was that corner five twenty-two and twenty?
It was very close there. But I, I will tell you, I'm, I'm encouraged because if, with, with the leadership that, that the school system has, whether it's Doug Duncan and his team or the school board with Ms. Carter uh and, and the various other organizations within the community, uh, it, it, it puts us in a, in a situation where we're really challenged to set those priorities. I mean, the, the, the budgeting process is, is very simple. You, you create a list of all the things you'd like to do and you start funding them. And at some point you run out of money. And then you ask the tough questions, is that it? Or do I take more people from the money? And that's when the community dialogue really begins in earnest and uh, I, I think it's a, as Jim said, it, it's a, it's an open process, it, it's a, it's a good process uh for us all to participate in and, and make our voices heard. Make sure our items get on that list of priority and get considered and so ultimately decisions have to be made. Uh, but, but be assured that, that your voices are heard. I, I try to respond to emails and phone calls and, yeah, I even get a few knocks on the door that I hadn't expected at times for people who have a particular point they wanna emphasize. But, but that's all part of the community dialogue, I will say, so.
That's what you signed up for.
Yeah, I know.
That's part of our job.
Yeah, that's right, so.
Just wanted anybody, you come knock on my door, I have a crazy hound dog, so.
So I'm, I'm actually encouraging you to, to continue, I.
Talk to your neighbors.
Talk to your neighbors, thi- this really does need to be as broad-based a discussion, get as many points of view. At the end, we really want a budget that it, that reflects the county's priorities, the county's beliefs, uh, the county's values to the extent we can. We will never get all the way to the bottom of that list, I will assure you. But, you know, let's make sure those things that, that the community really wants are on the list and, and we don't run out of money before we get to them. And, and you've gotta be part of that. So thank you.
Okay, I'll finish up then. I think we've made, well, good uh, all the notes on that, I wanna thank the two young people that spoke uh as I was reminded one other time. It's somewhat a daunting task. Um, and, and so kudos because it's tough to do it in front of people your own age, but when you get a bunch of suits and you gotta come up and talk, it's, it's altogether different. Uh, last thing I'd like to remind people, not this past Sunday, but Sunday before, I was at Montpelier for our uh founding fathers' two-hundred-and-sixty-third birthday celebration, which was extremely chilly with some very good Marines. Um, we had a great time when they did the twenty-one gun salute for the little squirrel in the tree and the horses right beside us wondering what was going on. Uh, they had a all-new perspective of what they thought of human beings at that point in time, but the, the reminder is that uh this county is as better a historic thing as you can get and the father of the constitution resided here. And for what he did at his age, in his twenties, uh, what he accomplished, that's um something that we need to get out to our students, that, that's something they can aspire to. And if nothing else, be glad that they can claim that we live where it all started. With that, I'd say, are we going into closed, we'll go ahead and
Okay.
eat and do that and thank y'all for coming.
All right.
We will be back later if you wanna hang around.
All right, ready? Whereas the board of supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters. Two matters concerning discussion of personnel which concerns a specific employee. Consultation of legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation which is consultation noted meeting with adversity good negotiating. It's gonna be a long time.
Yeah.
Litigating posture of the public body, consultation with legal counsel employee retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice, whereas pursuant to sections two point two, thirty, seven, eight, one, and eight, seven of the code Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting, now therefore be resolved. The board of supervisors of Orange County, to authorize discussion of portion matters in closed meeting.
Go both.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Gotta get a hug before you leave. I love you sweetie.
All right, to the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting, roll call.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Crane?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mrs. Bass?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, then go back to the agenda, uh, number seven, action items, acceptance and appropriation of grant funding for the burn building repairs. John?
Good evening.
Chairman, you also have an amendment to your agenda that you need to.
Oh, yes, uh, I wanna do an amendment to the agenda to a, what's the language you want?
Add, add an agenda item authorizing the chairman of the board to enter into a contract with the new county.
The item seven B?
Yep. Okay.
I move to a, adopt, or to modify the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Agenda's been modified. Now, John, back to you.
All righty. Here before you tonight to make the recommendation that we accept the burn building renovation grant from the Department of Fire Programs. Um, through the grant process, one thing we did find is our burn building is a little larger than what the um state will fund, so there is a, a price difference there of about fourteen thousand dollars. The fire chiefs have agreed to pick up that fourteen thousand. We were um led to believe that the engineering cost would be recoverable. Um, they were not. Um, my agency will make up that deficiency from that, um, for the contingency fund that you forwarded us those funds. Um, the rest of the funds will cover the uh renovations of the building, which is currently out of service.
I had a question, I'm looking at the uh grant stuff, it said uh, uh, that we have to keep this as a training facility for a period of twenty years. After the rehabilitation, will it last twenty years?
It's gonna need to have continuous maintenance done to it throughout the year, but what they're worried about is, you know, you put these funds into a building and five years later, tear it down and that, that's not the.
It says we gotta keep it going twenty years. Okay, but if it, with maintenance can keep going twenty years.
What if you wanna move it?
Well, that, that's gonna be an issue, that's a cement building that you are not gonna be able to move.
What if, what if you, well, I'm gonna say it like this, what if you don't want that building to be there anymore and you put it somewhere else?
Then that would create an issue.
If we paid for a new one, uh, uh, and continued to have such a building available, would that conflict with us?
What you can also do with that building is you can modify its use. The biggest objection to a burn building is when you burn it in the, in the smoke and all.
Understand.
But you still could use it as, there's a lot of other evolutions you can do in that building besides
Search and rescue.
Burn.
Mayday.
I'm saying not a training facility at all there anymore, let's say you never know what's gonna happen and.
Well, there's, there's another thing, you, you're not allowed to uh ensure appropriate encroachment factors uh for five years. Uh, so if somebody wanted to do something adjacent to it, you wanna expand any other facilities around there. Would seem to me that uh, uh, from a, from a logical standpoint, if we decided that we didn't want it there, we wanted to put another one somewhere else and we're willing to, to build it uh and spend the money for it, that I can't, can't imagine that the state would object as long as we still had a training facility.
There's another jurisdiction that still has an old burn building
Mm-hmm.
that is used for other applications and it's remote from the rest of your training facility. Basically, it's a vacant building at this point, but that's one of the reasons it's still there.
Okay, waiting out the twenty years.
Exactly.
But I think we can deal with this, the, the agreement calls for an attachment, I mean, Tom, you need to help me here, calls for an attachment A in which the term capital P project is defined. Cap, attachment A hasn't been prepared yet, I take it.
I haven't seen it.
And, and so therefore, when it is prepared, we need to make sure that we cover, you know, some of these bases that, that, at least make an attempt. I mean, yeah, I mean, I uh, I don't, uh, obviously, if we're taking this money, I agree that we need to keep a facility operating for twenty years. But it would seem that uh for twenty years, it's hard to predict that far in advance that uh if the, for other reasons, the county uh wanted to use that property for something, I don't, you know, anything, that we ought to have the ability to, by building another building somewhere else to, to be able to uh shut this one down. Especially in year seventeen or something, way down the road like that.
Section seven speaks to the grantee agrees to operate and maintain the project, which is a burn building. Now existing or built in whole and part as a result of this project, so it's not building anything, it's just renovating.
It's a renovation, not a.
But, but the project could be defined as, as the current building or one that serves the, the identical purpose that is constructed with our money, that's what, that's what I'm getting at.
That's all, that's all I'm saying, right now, you know, it's not a nuisance. It, I don't know about there, so it might be a nuisance to someone.
Maybe the smoke could interfere with the airport, airport or something.
You know, it, it becomes a nuisance and you need to move it to another location. All I'm asking is, are we allowed to move it to another location? Obviously not pick up the building, but build another building back in, in another location.
And I, I can't answer that.
As long as you kept that as a multi-story dog park. Well, and that goes back to, to supervisor.
But you have, you have to keep that building.
That's, that's the, that's.
But see, that goes back to supervisor White's question because it says we have to keep the project for twenty years and exhibit A is what defines the project. So if nobody has an objection, we can say the project is the maintenance of this building or replacement of the building at a different site.
That would, that would be fine.
And as long as they can live with that.
That's, that's where I was, right.
That would be fine. Because we're defining the project in the exhibit.
Yeah, I think the underlying intent here is there's no lapse in the burn building being available for training.
That, that I think is, that's a legitimate claim from, from the uh, for the purpose of this grant.
And I'm assuming we're feeling, we probably are providing the description of the project, we're telling them what we're doing.
Yeah, this is, this is a renovation.
So in the project, we can say renovate existing burn building and/or relocate building and make that the project so that the definition of the project is renovating existing or relocating.
Yeah, I mean, they're giving us money and so that we'll have a burn building to train on. And that's all we need to do is guarantee in some form we do that.
To meet, you know, applicable training standards and like-kind quality at another location.
Sure.
So when we get ready to exhibit A, just.
We'll, we'll get one, all right.
You have other questions?
Uh, the other was the, ensure appropriate encroachment factors of the surrounding land and what, what does that mean?
We should be covered on that since it's all county land surrounding it.
Understand, but if we wanted to expand something uh in that area, what does that mean, encroachment? I can't think of us coming up with any kind of money for this in five years, we're probably okay on that.
Their intent is you wouldn't want a neighborhood built up around this and that's where they've had problems with other fire training facilities around the state and around the country is you have something in rural area and then the next thing you know, it's in a neighborhood.
Subdivision around it.
Yeah, the board would approve of.
Well, again, in the definition of the project, you can say the facility and a buffer surrounding it of so many feet. Just, I mean, I, I don't like things not, that aren't defined and this is a case where we can provide a definition, see what, see if they bite you. Yeah, I mean, uh, I, I can't see us uh coming up with anything in the next five. Yeah, I mean, uh, I, I can't see us, uh, coming up with anything in the next five years, but, but again, I, I would rather not be, uh, bound by something that's undefined.
And again, I think maybe the worst case, and it's something that we could look at, is you might refund them for the, uh, the grant. I mean, that could be the worst case.
We, we want to maintain, we want to maintain a facility, and we don't want one that's gonna be screwed up by encroachment. So, how do we define that so that we're, uh, we're okay for it?
Can that be included on Exhibit A as well?
I think you can define the project in lots of ways, I think, because they don't say a particular building. Project seems to look for.
Well, I think in this case, there, this is specific.
They're looking at this building.
At our building, the renovations, they're required to put this building back in service, which is essentially replace some of the fire panels and replace some masonry.
And, and they expect it to be in service for the next twenty years.
I, I do want to point out that the language about the encroachment is, grantee further agrees to ensure appropriate encroachment factors. That may actually play to our benefit, because we'll argue whatever we did was appropriate. And so, I mean, we may not want to.
Okay, alright, let's just stay, let me stay away from that.
Because it's gonna be, we're gonna say, well, we, you said we had to do what was appropriate, and we did what was appropriate. And, you know, so to me, it actually gives us something.
We're the guys that are gonna have to suffer the consequences of whatever we do.
So, I, I think we probably retain some flexibility with the language as it's written.
Let's just drop that then.
Lee will be here in twenty years. He'll probably still be at your own doorstep.
Twenty years, you'll be sixty-five years old.
No, listen to me. I have no doubt in my mind, Lee Frame will be here twenty years from now. I'm just saying.
I can remember when we did this, the. Do we need to make any other modifications? Other than that exhibit?
Uh, I would be willing to, uh, to accept the Virginia Department of Programs' grant for the renovation of the building, uh, with, uh, the provisions that, uh, uh, attachment A B defines such that, uh, we have flexibility.
Well, it's also a clause in here, there's also a clause in here, one of the paragraphs I saw, that allows with their permission, which can't be unreasonably withheld, a transfer of the land.
Okay.
That was actually one, like, one of the paragraphs I saw, I don't remember which.
Really? I didn't see that, but it, it wouldn't surprise me, that's it.
Paragraph thirteen. "To the extent permitted by law, the grantee shall obtain title of the project and underlying land, and the grantee shall not release or transfer title without first receiving written approval from the board prior to such release, which approval shall not be unreasonably withheld." So if you go to them with a reasonable alternative, I think that there's a provision in there. I, I still like the definition in, in A, but we have that other clause in there as well, so.
I'd like to second the motion.
Alright. Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Okay, action item five, or seven B. That would be to.
Well, the, the motion, Mr. Chain, would be a, a motion to authorize the Chairman to enter into a contract with Mr. Brian David to become the county administrator and shed the interim label.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, now you have to do it the old-fashioned way. Earn it.
Now the honeymoon starts, huh?
I think we've been three days.
Okay, yeah, now we want breakfast tomorrow.
He proposed an eight cent tax increase, and you still married him.
Okay. Appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Does anybody have any at the moment? Have any of these people been contacted to see?
Uh, this is the first meeting we've had them listed, so I wanted to see, um, what your direction was before we contacted anyone specifically.
Well, that would be my thought. First contact and see if they're interested, and then that tells us if we need to look at other people if we want to. Any objection to that?
No.
Okay. Uh, discussion items, opposed amendments to compassionate billing policy.
Uh, it's my name on there. It, I, I, on the board of members, we discussed this a, a few weeks ago. We have a extremely soft billing policy with respect to people that utilize ambulance service here in the county. And we recommended a couple of changes. One of them, we have a section in our policy in time where, uh, somebody can apply for hardship waiver if they can't pay, they don't have insurance. That, those waiver requests have been handled by the fire folks, and we felt like that wasn't an appropriate burden to put upon them. So one of the recommendations is that we seek, or that the county, in paragraph four, that the county administrator can appoint a committee that analyzes the hardship requests to determine whether somebody's truly a hardship. I also added some language, we had, we said three hundred percent of the current poverty level, but we didn't really define poverty level, so I added some language just coming up with what's considered pretty much the standard definition of poverty level, was the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services definition of poverty. I, um, I also, in paragraph five, we recommended a, um, a change, that although we have a soft billing policy, that we will, if somebody doesn't pay, they don't have insurance, and they don't pay, and they don't obtain a waiver, that we will seek to get a judgment and record it, and then it would come out of a tax, if they got any tax refunds, so it would become a lien on a tax refund. We won't aggressively go after anyone, but if they had a tax refund or some sort of a check coming from the, the state or the county.
Does that place a lien on their property, then?
It would also place a lien on their real property.
So for sales, they would have to recover it during a sale?
So if the real estate was sold, it would have to be, the lien would have to be satisfied, or if they had a tax refund.
Okay.
In other words, not gonna aggressively pursue somebody.
Not gonna kick them out of their house.
We're not getting rid of the house or do anything, but if there is some sort of money coming to them, then it would come out of that. And, uh, so those are the two primary suggested changes.
Do we have any idea what percentage of the population would fall in that three hundred percent number?
Go back and look at our Skyline CAF notes.
I mean, I, I, I think we're talking about a very large.
I think it's gonna be a very high percentage of the population. Because I remember from the whole, the green process, when we were doing the economic development, that we were actually slightly below the median income anyway here in the county, so we're a little lower than the surrounding counties already. So, yeah, I suspect this three hundred percent is gonna catch a very high percentage.
And, and the, the Department of Health and Human Services numbers, the, the more people in the households, the larger that number gets.
That's right.
And when you get up to four and five, I mean, I think it can be seventy-five or eighty thousand dollars a year, three hundred percent of, I mean, that's.
I, I think you're.
I don't know whether three hundred is the right number or not. I'm not, I, I hadn't gotten to the point of arguing one way or the other. I just think we need to realize that we're, at that number, we're talking about a lot of people.
Well, that number was already in the.
Yeah, I know, I know, I see, you didn't change that.
There's a lot of people, but we're talking about those that don't have insurance.
Which, which I will point out, under the Affordable Care Act, has increased significantly. So, y- you know, going forward, we may be talking to a whole lot more people that don't have insurance.
Yeah, I know a bunch of people who now do not have insurance.
Page six of the Skyline CAF report actually has the twenty thirteen HUD, uh, house, it's, for one person, it's federal poverty is eleven thousand four ninety. Uh, four-person households, twenty-three five fifty. Seven is thirty-five, eight is thirty-nine, so three hundred times any of those numbers, or, yeah, three times.
Hundred twenty thousand, but that's a lot of people in a household.
Yeah, uh, so.
It may be fine, I just.
Six-person households, ninety thousand or less, then they're eligible for a hardship waiver. So that, that's gonna be a huge universal.
That's gonna be a large percentage of population.
That are eligible to pursue this.
Well, I guess that, that was really my question. It, it, this just simply makes them eligible. Then there's the review of the requested waiver.
Right.
Well, and they, and they've got to apply for a waiver.
They have to apply for a waiver, although.
Because, uh, a, a lot of times, they're just not applying. They just don't do anything, ignore the bill.
Well, and, and then maybe what'll happen is if they get the warrant and debt from the General District Court, then maybe they'll apply.
Or they can pay it.
Or they can pay it.
Do we have any dates in here, that they have to apply within a certain period of time, or anything like that?
I don't think it's currently has a date.
Is that, it seems to me that we, that might be something to consider, is to give them some reasonable time after the event to, to apply.
A lot of that, it's also dependent upon how, how the processing of the, uh, insurance, or determining that they don't have insurance. About six months?
Yeah, so, just something to point to, it seems to me would be.
That's fine.
Do you want to visit this three hundred percent? Do you wanna, want us to do a little research on it?
We can, we can change it at some point in time if it's not working. I mean, I'm okay with, I, I don't have any reason to argue it one way or the other right now, other than it's a, it's a lot of the population.
Part of, part of the reason, uh, we did that is that one time, we were not charging them anything.
No.
And so, uh, we were not anxious to.
They will have already run through about a hundred and eighty-day collection cycle with the vendor, right? So six months out, this would then hit our books for, for doing it.
But usually going through that cycle involves the fact that they've got insurance, and they're recycling, uh, back and forth through the insurance, and we wouldn't get them, that wouldn't have come under this, uh, at all. It's, uh, it's the one who doesn't have insurance, and they'll, and we'll know that a lot sooner than the hundred and eighty days.
Well, they'll continue the collection efforts, but at a hundred and eighty days, then they'll turn those over.
Yeah, they, they have a process they go through, but essentially around a hundred and eighty days, it gets to that point of demotion returns.
We could do this if you all are comfortable with it, you could adopt it tonight, and then certainly, uh, we can come back with kind of a, a six-month or twelve-month retrospective of, you know, here's how it works or not works.
How did you change the words on the six months? Where'd you put that?
First line of four, maybe. May submit.
It was, may, submit a waiver request form to the county within six months of the incident.
Yeah, that's where. Okay, that's fine.
Within six months of the incident.
I would move that we adopt it that way. Second.
Okay, motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries five zero. Uh, those billing rate adjustments for ambulance service, John?
Good evening again. Um, as you're well aware, we're switching billing companies, which actually, we go with the new billing company April first. One of the things our billing company suggests that we do is review our rates, and the, but first I want to talk about is our mileage. Currently, we charge two different mileage rates. First is urban, which we charge thirteen dollars a mile. And then what, after the first four, five miles, it turns into a rural rate at eight dollars a mile. We're one of the only localities that does that. Um, the suggestion is to go to even thirteen dollars a mile. Uh, the Virginia average right now is just under twelve. It's like eleven dollars and ninety-two cents. Um, I will say that the majority of, um, our current billing, or our new billing companies, uh, clients are in the process of getting ready to possibly adjust that rate. Just some rough calculations as far as, um, what that might generate for us. We have sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-six loaded miles that we actually bill for. When you subtract that first five miles at that, um, thirteen-dollar mileage rate, um, it, it, basically, there's like two hundred and fifty-three thousand more that we'd be able to bill for per year, um, on the mileage. The second thing that we need to take a look at is.
That would be two hundred and fifty thousand miles and an additional, an additional five dollars a mile.
Yeah, when you take, um, the, the sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-six miles that we bill for, when you take that first five miles off of each one of the transports we have, which we're currently billing at thirteen thou, or thirteen dollars, it leaves you, um, fifty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one miles is what we did last year.
So fifty thousand times five dollars a mile would be another quarter million dollars.
Again, that's, that's gross. That's gross now.
Understand.
Um, on the call types, on the BLS, ALS one, recommend that we go up, um, fifty dollars per call. That's actually gonna put us a little bit below the Virginia average. And the ALS two call go up to, um, forty-five dollars per call, and again, that puts us just a little bit under the, uh, Virginia average, and I, I provided a comparison chart. When you took, look at the, uh, increase in revenue from, from both these, and again, this is on last year's call volumes, you gross out at, you know, four hundred and twelve thousand. What we have to remember, though, that's four hundred and twelve thousand gross. We'd probably be bringing in about thirty percent of that, would be a, a, a very conservative calculation on that. Because what you have to take in consideration is Medicare, Medicaid, they pay one flat mileage rate. Different levels of insurance on the private side, again, depending on the level of coverage that the, the person has, is gonna pay a different rate. So it's not like you can say we have this sum of money, and, and because we have a fifty percent collection rate, for an example, that we're gonna collect fifty percent of that. I, I want to be clear on that.
What, what is the, uh, Medicare and Medicaid, uh, uh, BLS, ALS one and two rates?
I don't know those off the top of my head. I do know on the mileage side, the mileage for them is very low. Um, it's like in the two dollar, one of them's two dollars, and one of them goes up to around eight dollars. Um, on the thirteen dollar, our suggested thirteen dollar side, uh, for the private insurance companies, that's something that, um, they've been receiving.
So if a guy, if a guy has Medicare, and Medicare pays eight, then the private insurance picks up the other five, or whatever it would be?
It could be possible, or if we're billing that straight to private insurance company, um, they will pay that higher rate in most cases.
Okay.
So they're actually insurance companies paying that thirteen dollars a mile.
Oh, yeah. And we currently bill thirteen dollars a mile now for the first five miles. Um, and again, if you look, the Virginia average, um, is eleven dollars and ninety-two cents. So you're, you're a dollar, essentially a little over a dollar above that, and again, the thing I want to stress is, a lot of places are in the process of adjusting their rates, um, as we speak, as well as taking a, a look at their, uh, their billing policies, because most places are, been using a very.
What are our average mile is? Somewhere around nineteen, twenty miles?
It's probably a little bit more than that. I, I would say thirty, give or take, when you start looking at UVA and.
Okay.
And you're billing just, you're billing one way, I take it?
Right, that's one way. And that's what, loaded mile, that's when the patients.
That's only to do a transport.
Do you have an effective date for these new rates? Is this immediate, or is this start of the year, or what's your?
I personally would like to see it start, um, April first, when we start with the new billing company, if that's possible. That would be my recommendation, if possible. Again, that's, with your support.
Well, what, what you're proposing, don't look out of line until you get to mileage. And, we're, we're asking for, if nothing changes, a tax increase, and, and then.
I understand.
That's, that's, that I think is gonna be a hard one to swallow.
But I don't, but I don't think any of the citizens are gonna be hit by that individually.
It's, it's not so much what they're hit by as perception. Then you can go have that breakfast with some people that really think. And everybody there is gonna need this, probably this week.
Exactly right.
If they keep drinking that much coffee, they will.
Well, the one thing I, I will bring up is, again, if you decide not to go with the, um, the thirteen dollar, the current average is eleven dollars and ninety-two cents. We're the only county around that's doing the dual mileage, dependent rural.
No, I don't have probably going to dual, uh, getting rid of the dual mileage and raising it. I'm just not sure that thirteen is, uh, uh, the number.
Do we argue going to twelve, and that that's the state average?
That's probably good enough.
Well, your, your neighbor is at ten twenty-four. That's the one that, that really counts. Um, response to Vegas at eleven fifty. Uh, you know, Hampton, Martinsville, hell, that's not here.
Well, all jokes aside, though, in Culpeper County, they're taking their patients to the hospital right there in their county, unless it's, um.
Doesn't make much difference to them. It doesn't take much time.
It doesn't take much time. I'm fine with the thirteen dollars an hour, at, or thirteen dollars a mile, and I tell you why. They're gonna pay it, they're gonna pay it there, or they're paying in that eight cent tax increase, it's not like this money's going in a, a big pocket of money, and you're going out and you're having a big party. Um, we want to have, um, first-rate emergency services that are com, I, I find it ironic, we're using these larger localities, because, because we have the same, if not better, emergency services than they have, um, so, yeah, there you go. I mean, for real, for real, you wanna, you wanna have, you're not comparing us to rural counties, because we don't have the emergency services that they have in the rural counties.
True.
So, you wanna ha, we want to have good emergency services, we need to be able to pay for them, we need to be able to belly up for them, that's what everybody wants, I'm fine with the thirteen dollars a mile. Their insurers paying for it, if they don't have the insurance to cover it, they're not being charged for it, so. That, that thirteen dollars a mile is a drop in a bucket to the bill that they get when, from UVA Hospital for the stroke that costs them a half a million dollars, or, or something, so. I, I mean.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion. Including all that diatribe that came along behind it.
Not, not, not our stroke requirement, though.
They only have to pay it if they have a stroke.
Okay.
No, but I mean, you know, you came forward with a recommendation, you, you know, you came forward a couple of weeks ago and showing us all these cool little things that save their lives. If, if their big bitch is the thirteen, um, dollars a mile, then, um, I, I don't know what to tell you.
I'll second it.
Okay, I got a motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Nay. Okay, motion passes four one.
He'll still be paying the thirteen dollars a mile, but.
I'll still be paying it. I, I made my point on why I didn't support it, I don't agree that it's maybe not the right thing to do, it's maybe the time. Uh, okay, uh, determination of change is desired to the VDOT secondary six-year plan. Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board, you recall, VDOT came to your last meeting, uh, with recommendations on the six-year plan. You took this under advisement, uh, this is before you, as a final draft, uh, certainly you can make any changes tonight, or you can go, uh, with what you've prepared. Also, uh, it was recommended by VDOT that the board, uh, should, uh, develop a auxiliary list of projects that, where there's no funding, and that you would want to include.
Would that be our main list? Because there's no funding there.
They're gonna tell you that one either.
I, I, I'm sorry, it's just, for VDOT to appear before us with an ill-prepared financial statement, and make the statements they did about the maintenance of our roads, much less that we can pay two-tenths of a mile, I, I take real issue with it.
And they present us with a list that adds up to ten or twelve million, or some number like?
I'm sorry, I, it.
I think we let them off easy.
Yeah.
Uh, these guys, these guys have come to us, I mean, we could beat up on them, but.
It's not them, it's the state.
We need to beat up on their bosses several times we move, or beat up on our own legislators.
And I, and I'm quite sure these guys get the privilege of going to knock us out, but our county needs to get beat up on.
Everybody else. Yes, all the.
I'm sure they, they just go like, hey, it's Tuesday, what place do we get to go and get screamed at?
Uh, we did, we treated them nice, as we should have.
No, we, we did, so.
Given, given the board's, uh, perspective, uh, you'd probably just authorize us to advertise the plan as presented, and then we can come back to you at, uh, a later date with new this auxiliary list, because I think at the end of the day, it would be important for you all to kind of go through, to get that list at least, uh, developed, so that if and when funds come forward, we're certainly prepared to take advantage of them. Emphasis on if and when.
A motion for that, please.
I think, you know, this is just a waste, but you gotta do it, so I make the motion to go along with the farce. And, and that is my motion.
Six-year farce.
And I said farce.
Yes, six-year farce.
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a second to the six-year farce? Hearing none, I will make the second. Because I, I agree.
It is, I mean, oh, we got money, oh, no, we don't have money, oh, we've, you know.
Are, are we ready for any further discussion, Chairman?
No, actually, Jim, no, we're not ready for any more discussion about VDOT.
I, I have some further discussion.
Okay.
After Mr. Nesbit's presentation here, uh, he went out and inspected the things of our concerns. And I was highly disappointed with the email that he sent to, uh, the clerk. Apparently, either I need new glasses, or he needs some glasses, because his interpretation of minor potholes, and being unable to find where roads were crumbling, he needed a better location, because he could not find anywhere that it was crumbling. Once again, it's a true disservice to the citizens of this county by the state to not maintain our roads in the manner that they're doing. And, uh, said in my piece.
Just remember, they wanted to give them all to us anyway, so.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I understand.
That's a tax increase.
Lord have mercy, once we take them over, there'll be pickpasts and, Lord.
Do you like that, what was it, Minnesota and Wisconsin, just let them go back to gravel? Okay, uh, that being all the discussion I hear, all in favor, say aye.
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 Nay?
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes four ones. Okay, uh, any question on the information items? Committee reports? And then we get to calendar, adjustment to the budget work session on Thursday, April third.
I think we explained at some point that there's a potential conflict, uh, the planning commissioner has advertised public hearings at seven P.M. that evening, you have a work session scheduled at five, so either we need to relocate our meeting place to another venue, or, um.
Cancel the meeting?
Cancel the meeting, or reschedule it to another time.
Or be done before seven.
The same thing happened last year, the same thing happened to us last year. I mean, the thing of it is, we don't know that we're gonna need the meeting.
Yeah, true.
If you cancel it, then you can always.
What we could do is, we could, uh, if, if we feel that we need a lot more time to discuss that, we could, uh, come in, uh, an hour early, uh, on the, uh, the day we adopt, or go or come early when we adopt.
Or if we meet, we have to clear out by seven, we can only go for two hours, and it's.
That's possible, too.
That'd be my thought, just leave it at that.
Just understanding that you have to finish your work at least at that point by seven P.M.
Well, I'd, I'd maybe try to make, make the decision on the first, it says no action, but we could certainly do a calendar action, I suppose.
Yes, you can, you can, you can change your, your calendar action, however, this is.
Yeah, I mean, there's no reason we can't have discussion after the public hearing.
Yeah. Depending on how long that luck goes on.
That might tell us whether, whether and how much time we need on Thursday. Okay.
Just leave it as scheduled, then.
Because I'm here to tell you, if something happens and we decide not to have an eight cent tax increase, we're gonna need more than two hours on Thursday. You're gonna need more than eight hours on Thursday.
Yeah. Okay, that runs through that part, that will take us to the budget work session. Topic to be determined, do we have a topic?
Well, we, we have some, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, understand that past practice has distributed budget adoption resolutions, and so, that's really all staff has for you tonight.
And this is the agenda for, um, a week from today for the public hearing, and we thought it would save, um, you here another trip.
Okay.
That is scheduled to be here.
Unless you'd like to take it to another place.
I think this will be fine.
And other than that, we didn't have anything, um, particular, uh, for your discussion, that if any of the board members have any, um, thoughts that we need to discuss about the budget, we can certainly do that.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.